Jackie Johnson, President of the Newton County Board of Supervisors. Kenneth Harris is the Vice President of Promotion and Carrying the Mandates. Maserati car bid rejected by sheriff and board. One bid was received or surplus. Maserati car seized property of Newton County Sheriff's Department. And that bid was from Jimmy and Alan. His bid was eighteen thousand dollars. Bid was rejected as a minimum. Bid of twenty thousand was posted. And then I had omitted on there and reposted with a reserve amount over to eighteen thousand in the bids to be opened. Joe Alexander made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced a second motion to recess until January twenty one, twenty twenty one at nine o'clock AM. The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Any corrections on page one? Page two. For what little difference it makes, hour is junior, you get on during the night per hour.
Yeah, I fixed that when I read it.
Page three.
Then I fixed that on Maserati.
Your motion accepted. All right. Your first signature is President of the Board.
What does work.
You know, what happens when you tell them stories?
All right. We got him. Mr. Joey, you got him. He's going to open that bid while he's up here.
Yeah, there's not time on you.
I can't see you. Y'all missing it.
Me too.
I need the board to approve this is a barrier, Roberts. On the seven K plan, there's guaranteed money they're supposed to make, what I told him he was going to make a year. And it got mixed up somehow and he's two thousand dollars short for last year. I need the board to approve to pay the two thousand dollars to make up for what his guaranteed money was.
I can't hear you, Joe.
Vega Roberts, the deputy who works for me, he guarantees so much money per year, what I told him he was going to make, he was short two thousand dollars because it got mixed up somehow with the seven K plan. So I need the board to approve and to authorize, give him a two thousand dollar check to make up for what he was supposed to make last year, which still comes out of my budget.
And that's his money to set us by the seven K plan.
Yes.
Do you need to do that? To just adjust his rate?
We've adjusted it going forward. I think that's in George's, which will be in his employee changes, but he's wanting to make up for what he didn't get last year. And we didn't have anything on paper to justify that. So he's got to come forward to the board and get that approved.
And I mean, that's, on his pace, he likes what he should have got. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right. And with the seven K, I mean, you kind of have to back into the hourly rate. I mean, y'all understand that. So I mean, this is just, I guess, to correct administrative error in his calculating that rate of that. If that's what y'all choose to do.
All right. So.
All right. You say it's supposed to be in these changes today?
It should be, unless Stephanie didn't put it in there.
Then we'll make that.
So we backed it last time.
This is for life. Okay. That probably will be on the next bunch of those doors.
Who was the second one? I don't even make money.
Give y'all a little update on the building project. We've got the plans drawn out. We got with the contractor. He's giving us a list of building materials. Since COVID happened, everything went up. So it's, the price is going to be more than what we originally thought it was going to be, what he originally thought it was going to be. I contacted you with lumber and they donated the lumber to frame out the inside of the building. Joe's going to do the dirt work. We're going to contact, he's going to give me a list of the people he gets materials from. I'm going to go to a person and see if we can get the price lowered down. If we can get it lowered back down to where it was the original price, it'd be a lot simpler, no bids and no posts and stuff like that. I guess that's all I got. Unless y'all have any questions.
Have you gotten the grant money yet?
That's reimbursable. That's the money from the state.
We have to pay for it.
Okay. Reimbursable?
Yes.
Somebody from home.
Somebody from home. Where are you going to put that, Joe?
To the north side of the office now.
You're coming in the apartment like you just arrived.
You're getting in the apartment, it would be on the north side of the building.
One question.
My question to you. One's over that door.
Yes.
It's supposed to be three.
Can't go by Maserati. Jimmy and Alan bid eighteen thousand dollars.
That was Jeff's take.
That's the time we can go somewhere in an hour second. You bet or it'll be through your Maserati?
No.
We got to get his money first.
They can pay you first. Nobody's paid on Gus' deals past three times.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. You know where he is.
I know where he is.
Mr. Richardson.
I don't have nothing.
You don't have that. We kind of want to, come on up there, let us talk to you. Guess basically, we want to know how your department's going, how you think last year went, how you think next year is going to be.
Considering everything we had, I think it went pretty well. I didn't really get to do much EMA stuff with the COVID stuff. That kept me busy with supplies and all that kind of stuff. But we did manage to get the care back grant completed. We got a pretty good payday back on that. I'm proud of that. And we're in the process of setting up vaccination sites now for the county. And then we'll get that, it'll be drive-through, you just drive through, get it going, keep going. Other than that, I'll try to get started back working on that trailer again, that communications trailer. It kind of got pushed to the side with everything that was going on. That's about it.
Generator's going to be in trouble for you?
No. I think they're supposed to be coming and fixing everything that's wrong with all of them. I think Stephanie got that set up. Kayla's been working with her on that.
And I don't know, I mean, y'all know that, you know, Paul Dunn, I'm just checking on, make sure they had fuel and everything and asked Robbie to take over that and they said he would.
Well, I think you got two of them, two of them.
One's at the DHS office and one's at the mall. And then this one down here, one at the jail.
More questions? Appreciate your service. Thank you. Mr. Cooper, do you need anything or you just bid?
Here's the A R doing.
Come on up. This is the last meeting you came to while you were here. We had a call out on point four, point Rock and Dead. And a guy showed up at the end of our meeting and went on the call. And it was twenty-five minutes. Maybe I don't remember what the conversation was. I think it was when I checked, I'm not sure, but I think at like eight or nine o'clock in the morning, took him like nineteen minutes to get that served. I don't know the list as you remember.
I have to go back and pull that.
We need to check. See, I just thought that was kind of a lapse time.
So it was not the last we all had, which I was going to say, I'm sorry, I didn't make that.
The last one is you had came. It would have been the last meeting since around the twenty. But I know yesterday was over the evidence, kind of like everything, that pretty well there.
Well, I believe it could have. And I like to think Kirk Pinkton and Robbie and Brian were there for all their help on that. They were all very, very helpful.
Thrifty.
I'll check in, they'll call them. By next time we see each other, it should have given some information.
We still have the, we got three minutes.
There is two days this month and three next month. I don't have three ALS trucks up yet. I should be hearing back from a guy today if he can put two of those days up and another guy inquired about one of them this morning. So every day has at least two. Most days, I'd say ninety percent have three.
Getting better.
It's looking up.
Will you open? Any more questions? Y'all have any questions for on this?
Questions for CareMed?
All right. Thanks. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir. I have a number two.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Y'all do a good job getting to us.
Well, I think they want to. Come on up.
Mind if I bring a list with me? It's still part of my.
We're going to go there and amend it anyway.
All right. So.
You have to get back to the board.
Yeah, well, we don't have to. We don't have chairs or COVID. Yeah, I figured out. I figured y'all are some distance for.
Of course, it isn't. I got the phone that had two.
I'm like, hey, my dog.
You can't hear everybody. I don't have a cord.
You got Alyssa, I see. So one, I'm here. Listen, how's it going?
He's doing okay. They were able to get him into a wheelchair yesterday. They're starting slowly. They're still waiting to get him into medical rehabilitation. But he's doing really good, just getting over it.
We have tickets. You don't even know what.
No, I know.
My husband was in a very bad car wreck and had to be airlifted to U M C. He had internal bleeding, a crushed pelvis and broken femur and broken right leg.
Two weeks ago?
Yes, it was two weeks ago on the eighth.
And we have tickets for chicken plates on the seats if you got one there in the office.
Eight bucks. Is that a Saturday? I'll buy a plate if I ain't going to get it to give to somebody to eat it.
We'll be doing it with, I'm sorry. That's quite all right.
One of the reasons I'm here, I'll start from the fire coordinator side and follow with kind of help Alyssa out as well for the dispatch side of things. With the fire coordinator side of things, everything seems to be running fairly smoothly. Last chief's meeting, obviously Alyssa and Robbie were there with me. I bring those guys and I might CareMed to all the chiefs meeting. So if they get questions, they can directly ask those individuals themselves. It seems to work out better that way. This past year, I think the fire, fire service side of things worked out pretty smoothly for the most part without any major hiccups. As far as the communication stuff that you guys approved last, end of last year, those radios have arrived, but the invoices have not yet arrived as of today. And I was hoping that they would be in my hands before today. That way I wouldn't have to come asking you guys for any type of extension. But as of today, they were supposed to be.
I thought we did a special document on that to pay for it for you.
You did. It was actually in the contract to be by the end of January, the end of January. And my fear is the day is the twenty-first, it's the last day of the, it's twentieth, the last day, last board meeting we're going to have before the end of the month. So I just, I'm coming to you guys today to ask you for a somewhat of an extension. All the equipment has been ordered and the equipment is in, it's getting programmed and done for it at Jackson Communications. The problem is, we don't have invoices yet, so we can't submit payment. So I just wanted to bring that up with you guys.
Paid for, I mean, to do it. We shouldn't have to do anything else anyway, right?
We paid the fire departments and in the contract, we said the fire departments had to spend the money by the thirty-first.
We're just waiting on an invoice and back to the fire department.
Right. So that they can cut those checks and get them stamped, which there, I don't anticipate on any issues there, but I did want to let you guys know, it's going to be, it quite possibly could be after January thirtieth before that money is spent by the fire department until I get invoices and a copy of the checks brought back to you guys to show that we've actually paid for. And I just want to make sure that there's nothing that, we need to do from a contractual agreement side of things to do that with other than a gentleman's agreement, you know, between, between us to that.
I mean, I think we need to go ahead and just vote to amend the contract to extend it, the deadline to, what a good day to.
Get them to invoice.
I mean, you think by the end of February?
End of February, we, it will definitely, it will definitely be done by then. I think it will be done by then in January, but I wanted to discuss.
I know, I know, these five departments have already gotten the equipment somewhere. I know they're buying it, it's just.
Right. Just to write it back in it.
Well, it's an impossibility for them to do what the contract says because they don't have an invoice, so they can't, you know, make the payment as required in the contract.
So. I think that would probably make them feel more warm and fuzzy and then I think probably for you guys as well, that we still have contracted place and we're still honoring the contract.
Just do a motion to modify the.
End of February?
Modify the contract.
Exactly.
All in good. What about the radio themselves? How's all that work?
So, what's it, it's always not in, but they're being programmed. And I'll have, the radios we do have in, we're going to implement it. We've implemented that into our dispatch system. It's working. Everything seems to be working properly. We've had the programming stuff, we've had to go back and work a few bugs, but anything new is.
If I could ask this question, I want to ask Jimmy. Since, since all the fire departments have gone to this win along with y'all, what is your feeling on shared channels? Not, not to be on there just yapping and, but like, like at Red yesterday.
I was asked, did you ask me?
Yeah, we've addressed that. The chiefs and assistant chiefs are going to have their turn, but the regular firefighters aren't.
You need to run that one.
Yeah, we already, we've got with all the departments and everybody's on the same page with all that.
Thank you, Joe.
So the, the last thing that come to you is with Alyssa and the dispatch center down there because, you know, that was, when I agreed to stay on the fire coordinator, part of that deal was that I would assist dispatch and Robbie and them if they needed my help, but more specifically with dispatch because of the technical side of things down there. CareMed has got the contracts with Jasper County, which in turn is going to help us out considerably because now we've got a county that sits beside us that we can share resources back and forth between the two. So hopefully that's going to help these guys out and making sure that they have at least a, a truck at times whenever things get really busy to share between the counties, move trucks around. If I'm stepping in your, in your business, I do apologize, but one of the things that stand off for quite happens to be the operations manager for CareMed has approached me and Alyssa with is the potential of us, so Jasper County has one dispatcher at the time and they never have dispatched for EMS side of things. And the thing that they're asking us is we would, we would be interested in dispatching for Jasper County as well, as far as, for their county for EMS services only. We've looked into that and as far as making it happen, it wouldn't, it's not going to really cost us anything. There may be a small cost with bringing in their CAD data into our system, but that would all go back on CareMed. They understand that any startup cost, if you guys approved it, would be, would be on the DM. And then we agreed on, you know, if, with y'all's approval, you know, the first year would be three thousand dollars per year and then every call thereafter that, after the first year would be four dollars and fifty cents per call, which would put us at whatever the past year's worth of service that we provide for them. That's four dollars and fifty cents per call beyond that, which is with the guarantee of three thousand dollars per, per year to make that, per truck.
All right. Now, my only question is, this relates to you. Is that going to overload our dispatcher?
We've looked at it. Jasper County really does not have a high volume. They might get days every now and then where it's more hectic than not, but I'm there Monday through Friday, eight to five, where the most busiest times happen, to help balance that out. If we got a little.
I've worked in Jasper County. It's, it's really not, compared to Newton County.
It's nothing that works in certain.
They're looking at two to four calls, two to four calls with a max of five per day. In each one of those calls, we listen back on recordings, each one of those calls are about twenty to twenty-five minutes in length. That's usually how long they take from start to finish. That's how we come up with the, well, where do you come up with four dollars and fifty cents per, per call? Well, the four dollars and fifty cents per call come up with a twenty-five minute base with the average time of ten dollars per dispatcher, that's what we're paying them per hour, the average pay. And we said that in twenty-five minutes was four dollars and fifty cents per, per twenty-five minute increment. So we said, okay, well, four dollars and twenty-five cents per call. And what we'll do for the first year, because we don't know what that call volume's going to be, is three thousand dollars per unit plus whatever startup cost that you want plus, and then after the first year, we'll go back and see what that call volume is and charge them four dollars and twenty-five cents per call, which would give us a fair and reasonable amount of money.
With a minimum of three thousand dollars.
With a minimum of three thousand dollars. Now, I will tell you this, what, what other things do we benefit? Even if we didn't receive any funding, which we have to, to reimburse us for our time that we spent doing it, there's still the benefit of now, we know where their units are located, which there's huge benefit, there's huge benefit for us as far as Newton County residents by having the, just the sheer knowledge of knowing where their units are located and what they have available to, not to, not to us, not the word benefit, two trucks from it, but now we can share resources between counties and should help us out with these, with this EMS calls as well.
There is guaranteed mutual aid.
Yeah. How many trucks y'all, are they going to run in that?
Two. They're running two, two extra trucks.
But now, now I have talked to Stan a couple of times and he's talking about if the call volume is good, they might put up another truck near the county line.
Yeah, near the county line, they want to just put one up.
But now the flip side of this, I, I do agree positive, but the flip side of this is it could pull our truck into Jasper County too, right?
True. Well, if you go one, if you, here's, here's, that's, that's kind of the toy, so.
Yeah, but we hadn't, we hadn't had too good a look at that.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. And it's a long way down the string.
Well, I will tell you, Alyssa probably can tell you better. How many times a week does it stand right now that ASAP, which is the current service in Jasper County, ends up coming, or how many times a month does Jasper County?
I can't think of more than twice that they've called and requested us for mutual aid.
Okay, I'm just throwing that out.
But I can count on both ends, how many times we've called ASAP for mutual aid.
Yeah. We're going to reap the benefit out of this one.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I mean, I see what he's saying. It, it could go either way, but I still think it's going to benefit us more.
Thank you, Cooper. Appreciate you, sir. Yeah, I think in regards to whether they're sitting in the room or whether they're not, I think in this term, we actually are going to reap more benefits out of this agreement than what they are, they would.
How do they dispatch now? What do they do?
ASAP has their own dispatch.
They'll call nine one one and if they determine that any medical, then the nine one one dispatcher will transfer to ASAP, Med Dispatch.
Now, personally, I have a trip to Jasper County to look at their system and what they have and how that would transfer into our system. We made several test calls yesterday to make sure that the imported information was going to be transferred into our center whenever they transfer those calls. And we get any alley, which is a phone, the phone number that comes with it alone is the location information of the call. All that transferred over all, all the times that we tested yesterday to make sure that this is something that's going to work before, you know, we jump off into something over our heads.
And this may go back, y'all remember, we first, our call pulled that two, three years ago when the show was down, it had changed out or had sent word, whatever, about eventually, you know, they're going to try to combine a lot of this anyway. It might be give us a leg updated in that direction if we do this.
It helps put more roots down for us if we're helping another.
There's nothing else, you know, Steve and I talked about it a long time ago. The more, I know it's, we're talking six thousand dollars a year, is all we're talking right now, but every, every six thousand dollars we get is a little bit more that's less coming out of what Newton County is actually paying for. And I think we've been, if we look back at where we started back in seventeen until now, we're, we're bringing in funding from Newton, which we were never doing before. Bringing in funding from Decatur, which we were never doing before. And East Central, which we never was. Hickory, which we never was before. And now if we pick up Jasper County, that's another six thousand dollars towards making up the negative portions that the county has to pay out of the general fund budget. So I think with everything that I'm seeing from dispatch centers, I think we're moving in the right direction because now we're guaranteeing to keep our nine one one service in Newton County and then still being a potential site for a regional location at some point in time, which that's where we're headed in some point in time.
What kind of outbuild this will be placed?
Well, that's.
You have your ambulance. Yeah, I'm just saying, we just got to make sure they get the call after that. It should be off the bus, right Jason, on the ambulance provider.
I put some wording in, and I, you know, I took the contract and added some stuff to it. I sent it to Jason's, we can look over a little bit more, but I put some wording in there, basically it says that they're responsible for, you know, any of their equipment, any services they provide. We're strictly taking the call in, dispatching the information out to them and beyond that, they're fully responsible for all their radio equipment, all their ambulances, all their staff, any services they provide and, and that may not go too far.
And our CAD will report it just like it was if somebody Newton County called.
And your only responsibility is dispatching ambulance. You don't have to do.
We're going to receive.
The response, the first response.
We're just going to receive the nine one one call and dispatch the ambulance. We're not dispatching any first responders.
All right. Who's going to pay them? Who's going to be paying the dispatcher?
So did CareMed.
CareMed. All expenses are going to be paid from CareMed.
And if any pay increases come up, like, you know, our dispatchers say we're being overloaded, we can be doing more work and we want to raise before that come up.
So I put in there, and I'm sure Lex and Jason have to look at it, but I put in there, each year is just good for a one-year term. It's four dollars and fifty cents per call, which I expect the call volume, their call volume is to be a little bit more than what I figured for the first year. I figured it on the lower end because they've got that startup cost plus the three thousand dollars we got for the first year. Years after that, I expect it to be a little bit more and then we can always, it's written in the contract that the operations cost, we can go back and look at that again, your applicable portion of the contract. So at four dollars and fifty cents, when we give, let's say we give less, a little raise plus our other dispatchers, we may have to go back and look at that four dollars and fifty cents per call and decide that, hey, four dollars and fifty cents per call is, is on the low side now because we've had to give everybody across the board a raise. So now we're going to go up to four seventy, four seventy-five or five dollars per call. Anybody that do it or they don't, you know, it's their decision. They want us to dispatch, then we can, we go at five dollars per call or else they have to look for something different.
I'm not against it. I just know that factors got to come somewhere. And usually about a month into it, that's when you get hit, hey, we're going to work for two counties, we got to have more.
Yeah.
So we need to protect that as much as we can or even know where it's coming from.
And then same thing with the cities too. It's written in their, in all local agreements we did for the cities that, you know, we were charging twelve dollars per person, per census for each year, which that twelve dollars at some point in time, once we realize that our cost of operations is going up because of our payroll, insurance, whatever the deal may be, or cost of new equipment, then that twelve dollars may have to go to thirteen at some point, you know. I know for the, for the cities, that, that pay amount is locked in for a three-year period. For the, for EMS, I put it in there for a one-year period because each year we'll have to look at that based off of the previous year's call volumes to determine what we need to be charging them for that, that particular year.
And if, if they just done a one-year contract, apparently you may be dealing with somebody different than you.
That's right.
So I mean, this may be a year by year based on.
And there's a ninety-day out in this contract as well, so that any point in time, either parties decides they won't out with ninety days notice that you can, both of you can walk away from it with ninety days notice.
CareMed and Jasper, four-year contract.
Is it four?
I sent, I sent you, you see where I sent? which uh, that twelve dollars at some point in time, once we realize that our cost of operations is going up because of our payroll, insurance, whatever the deal may be, or cost of new equipment, then that twelve dollars may have to go to thirteen at some point, you know. Um, I know for the, for the cities, that, that pay amount is locked in for a three-year period. For the, for EMS, I put it in there for a one-year period because each year we'll have to look at that uh based off of the previous year's call volumes to determine what we need to be charging them for that, that particular year.
And if, if they just done a one-year contract, apparently you may be dealing with somebody different next year either.
That's right.
So I mean, this may be a year by year based on.
And there's a ninety-day out in this contract as well. So that any point in time, either parties decides they want out with ninety days' notice that you can, both of you can walk away from it with ninety days' notice. That care man in Jasper, four-year contract.
Is four?
I sent, uh, I sent you, you see where I sent you that copy? Just to make sure that there was no disagreement between.
The problem is, they, they verify, is these numbers will.
That'll do that for county, go over super hours too.
So I talked to their, and of course, yes, I agree with you, probably need to make sure that we're not creating any bad blood.
Yeah, care man had sent me too.
I did talk to uh, I did talk to, through their emergency manager Mike, um, and uh, Hudson Jenkins, their fire coordinator. I was like, look, I said, you know, this is what care man has asked us to do. I said, I know you got ears to the ground over there. You talk to these guys. I said, I just wanna make sure that we're not causing any, you know, any bad blood between us and Jasper County because that's definitely what we don't wanna do, you know, before we started down this venture. And uh, both of them reassured me that, that, you know, that this was under contract for them to find somebody else. And it was pretty much known that they were gonna come to, to us and ask us for that. And then I said, well, what about the sheriff? I said, can this, you know, the sheriff's, the dispatch center's kinda in the sheriff's department. What is, what is he saying about it? And he's like, the sheriff was one of the ones that actually was pushing for somebody other than their dispatch center to do it because they would have to hire another dispatcher because they only have one dispatcher as it stands right now. Uh, so he was pushing for it to go somewhere else other than Jasper County, so.
Now, they'd have to pay for upgraded equipment and everything just to.
But I, I've heard you guys to do a little, little checking around yourself too on that, just to make sure. Because like I said, I, I, I don't want calls bad blood with those folks and uh, with, with any of the folks that I work with. And I know you guys don't too either, so. But we brought this to you today and then, then you guys can look over it and Jason can review it.
When does care man take over?
March the first will be whenever they, so between now and then, we, our next meeting, I would like to either a yes or no that way for you. If it's a yes, we probably need to, there's some things we gotta get kicked in high gear too to make uh, make it work out as far as from the technical side of things. But if it's a no, that's fine. No hard feelings, mate, I don't care either way. I'm just uh, that's completely up to you guys, but like I said, if it's a yes, there's some things we gotta work on, so.
I have some questions for you, but um, it's one thing to say about Brian, tell him, tell your basis, call him, what's an error that you asked him?
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I tried to, before I come to you guys, I tried to, what, I didn't first do that because y'all caught me in a, y'all caught me a pickle a few times, so. Y'all have anything, anybody have anything else?
Who's gonna talk to Jack and Ken?
Uh, I think we need to call the board supervisor when they set up meeting with us and care man. Them discussing it, and them not used to knee-jerk reactions with, with them talking.
And I think if he was gone, we also need to share and make sure, get it out of his own mouth that, hey, I don't want no part of this. Please y'all take it. So like I said, the last thing we wanna do is step on somebody's toes and then only call, phone to the line or something, then you have a fallout on a call or something. You know, if we're going in this, everybody know we trying to help and they wanting to help, then you should never have something out on the road that we won't know about to itself.
Again, the bottom line, I'm saying this, I wanna make sure, because we've got on our own limb to try to get our services up to serve Newton County.
Right.
And we don't want to, we, we want to gain, we don't want to lose, we want nobody else to lose, so.
Right.
It's just, uh, I don't wanna do something that's gonna cause us not to be able to function like as good as we are, better than we are right now. So we can overload somebody sometimes, so.
I agree.
I don't like to jump off in anything without talking. And I'd like to talk to the board over. And care man too, and see what they're, everybody's gonna be involved. I know it's not a decision day to day.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't like to run into it and say we'll be ready if it were the first either, because we, that's just ten days away. I don't know what we make out of that either, so.
Well, I, I don't either. I don't want us to mess around. If we can help it and then not have anybody to dispatch for care man the first week they there and miss call, somebody pass away or, I mean.
Well, that's not our problem down there though, Joe.
Well, yeah.
It's not, you know, that's it.
I understand that, but.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, at the same time, I think we need to take a pretty look, look at it and move forward or again, whatever.
Yeah, so March the first is when they go into operations. So even if we made a, if we made a decision by our next, if y'all were able to talk to everybody and we were able to make a decision by our next board meeting, that gives us less than thirty days by the next board meeting to try to get everything. Uh, and, and we can go and start moving in that direction, anything that doesn't cost us any money right now. But um, if there's gonna be some fees involved, then, you know, it needs to be done after the next meeting. So I guess that's the whole thing I'm putting out there is if we can make a yes or no decision by the next meeting, that would be, that would be good.
So what is the consensus? Are we gonna meet with their board? Well, we need to make, find out when they can, if they want to or whatever. We just need to get on the phone, make them call and discuss it, see what they'd like to do.
Call, yeah, it's y'all. He made, I mean, that's, that's the way that some of that stuff kinda works now.
And I did talk with their chantery as well, uh, just, and like I said, I'm not trying to step over, over my boundaries either, but I felt like I was being presented with this. I was gonna try to gather the information for you guys then. The people I have talked to is their chantery emergency management director and the fire coordinator. Uh, and I made a trip down there, so that's where.
None of them had any.
None of them had any problems. The chantery is the one that sent me the copy of the contract and I forwarded along to uh, to Jason to make sure that we have no conflicting uh information between the contract that we put together and the contract that Jasper County signed with care man. So, but yeah, I'd, I'd be appreciative of y'all doing your, your diligence as well to make sure that we're on our up and up.
Jason, do you contact Ricky Rub?
Yeah, I'll call.
Check with him, see what his feeling is, I don't know what they're playing liabilities and all that kinda stuff. That's a lot of, I'm kinda gray areas I'm looking at, but before I say hold up and say, yeah, I wanna do that, for probably to need down.
Sure understood. Sure enough. I guess that's all I have for you guys. Unless you have anything else for me or Alyssa?
Anybody have questions? Alyssa, we kinda wanna get a take on your department. How's things been going since you've been there?
Uh, it's good. We're making it.
You're making it. How's your employees?
They're good. Um, you know, when the pandemic was starting, we kinda got hit a little bit hard. Everybody stepped up and got shifts going, work overtime and all that. So everything's good, you know, able to get everything covered. Kinda had a little hiccup of, in bad weather one night, kinda took out one of our backup batteries and our internet went down for a little while. We were able to get that up for the most part and hire a good IT guy that we trust that specializes in nine one one systems. So he's getting us back to full operation and making sure everything's good and we don't have any problems. Like, what was that other county that kinda got?
Clark County.
Yeah, Clark County. Avoid any of that, that we can, so we're gonna do with that. And now we're supposed, we're working with uh Brian and EMA to move everything to Missland seven hundred and keep our consoles up to date and everything so we can get better communication out to more rural areas. So we're working. It's a slow process, but we're, we're getting it.
What about our backup unit? I'm asking the board and all, the backup unit that we have plugged in, is that and was that a feature that we was talking with Paul about? That's the only thing we had is one backup unit. That's plugged in out here, the generator.
We need generator on it.
Yeah, the generator.
It's at the show.
You got one, it's in the, at the show barn. And let me tell you the reason I moved it to show barn, I should have already had this conversation on Robby when I was in that position. So there was a couple of different times, and Alyssa was here for, for show along as well, that our generator back here, for whatever reason, didn't start. And we get, if that's generator back here, does not start when the power goes out. You've got fifteen minutes worth of battery backup at the very best. If you have brand new batteries upstairs, which those batteries are four years old now, a lot of them. And it probably, you're looking more closer to five to six, seven, eight minutes maybe. So if this doesn't start, after that, our nine one one system's down. We have no longer capability of taking nine one one calls, dispatching information. You get hurt, so I had that, I had that generator, uh, took it to the show barn. We had it serviced. I had it plugged up down there so it stayed, the heater core stayed plugged in and running and it would stay charged all the time. For the use of running down there, hooking up to it, bringing a power panel up here and setting up and then we'll have a backup uh generator. And the reason we moved it from the justice court to down there at that particular time was because it's sitting out in the open. Remember, we talked about by the shed, put over it. And we said, well, we, we just built a lean-to down there, or, or a, the CFR, a thirty thousand dollar lean-to. So let's take it down there and stick it in there. So that's why, how we ended up from justice court to the show barn at that particular times is because we had a, we had a covering for, for all that equipment and that's where we decided to put it. Now, hooked up a power cord so it would stay plugged up and stay heated and, and all those things. Whether, I don't, so give us a backup to this one if it doesn't start and run. But I wanted you to know the consequences of this one not running. If it, for whatever reason, if it doesn't kick on and run.
It may not again, but we've had it serviced and checked and everything we know to do.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's equipment's equipment. It may not stop.
You're exactly right.
Brian, I still don't think it's coming on running during the week. Do you ever hear the whistle?
I don't hear it on Mondays. We were talking about that other day.
It hasn't since they did that problem. It said was doing something. They cut it off where it wouldn't automatically come on. And I don't know if we ever got that fixed.
Didn't Paul say move the dates that it come on because of court?
Moved it to when?
I don't know.
I know how they physically, you'll tell me what date you want it to kick on and run, what time I can make that happen.
Steve, I think that's something Stephanie has been talking to Taylor equipment about.
Yes, she know did.
Okay, so I don't know if that's, if there's a work order involved.
She called me and asked me that I've been here and I said, no, I haven't.
I think you got taken off.
Automatic run because they were saying it had something to do with our air conditioner problem.
That's what it was.
Electrical problems.
Maybe that's what was messing up these.
Computer panels on the air conditioner.
Sir, that's our backup generator. I understand what you done and it was right follow the time. But let's say a tornado comes through, fifteen highways blocked with trees and it's two days before you can get the generator up here and that means nine one one's gonna be down till we get that generator back here. Do we not need to put up a little top over here and put that thing back off the road?
The cover needs to be built, with the habit.
Okay, do you pull it out? I mean, you pull it up, man, just come and hook it up?
Yeah.
And what's about Paul's little shop here? I don't know anything about it.
It's, we ought to go, Jack and I relate there, it's that.
Okay, we couldn't put it in there? We couldn't put it out on others by the sheriff's department. That'd be too far.
Oh, I should have thought it. I should have thought. Get free crossroads. Who knows how they'll do for them to deal with the road.
The bad way.
Hey, the other thing.
A lot of. We should know pretty well whether this is running or not. That's the money that we've spent. It's supposed to be something.
I think that's the key is to get this one where we know this. Auto back will come on once it went to run.
Generator boy was my water pump.
We take it, make a lot of damage, hot, long, long. You get that jail in, in that diesel or filter collapse.
Water pump.
It's anything. We ought to look at putting up a pile up top, we can get that over the back. And that way it probably breaks out fifteen miles later.
You saying, do we need it across the street or do we need it right here?
Well, that's a good place to put it out of the way. The judge, our legal partner, he's buying that.
Hey, the other thing I was gonna mention before we get out, and we'll take too much time to finish already, but uh, just a reminder, we, you know, we put that system in two thousand seventeen down there, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, we're about four years into a nine one one system. A lot of you guys have been here long enough to know.
About four years.
About every five, six years, you gotta start making some small upgrades. So just wanted, not that we need anything today, as, as, as of today speaks, but I do want y'all keep that in the backside of your mind. That way you know what's coming in the future. It's not a big surprise, so.
I think our radio system's gonna be the next one.
I think you're right. It'll have to be down that route. If y'all need anything else from us, we'll get out of y'all's area.
Got any more questions?
No. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
I'm going to check on tomorrow. I haven't been able to see as much, trying to get work done. Just doing the house here. Not for the last, it's a last, it's how it matters. Thank y'all.
I think we need to back to this thing you run.
So again, I think Stephanie has got the acquisition, purchase of the tailor to come. I may be wrong about this.
You know, we had cooking down there. The guy was here servicing these machines. I just wanted, 'cause I didn't hear him crank that one while he was down there at the DHS office.
Yeah, that one was running while we were there.
Okay, well, it's okay. I just wondered if he cranked this one.
I don't know the answer to that. I think he was doing that one in the show barn.
Okay.
That day.
We said.
It made a run at twelve o'clock, but I hadn't heard it cranked since they thought that might be a 15. Paul said something about taking it, it wasn't running there today, but you never know. You didn't want it running by quarter going on. Now, it may be running at midnight. I don't have any idea. It might not be running at all. But there's something we need to make sure. Well, I'm, I'm telling you all, the generators, the diesel generators, they may run today, but I, I did want it on a regular basis. Uh, Steve, that's where we're gonna get.
Marty was on at nine fifteen.
He needs. Yeah, we want to go.
Uh, tracks plus. You've got some equipment.
Yeah, well, the, the backup, excuse me, the motor grader and the mini excavator. Cleared several of us. I just gonna do that on auction tonight.
Well, I know you declared the mini excavator. Have we already done the catapult or the grader?
No, no, it's the ball that's greater, but yeah, I'm, I'm almost positive that's been done.
I know the mini has, and probably that one was done earlier. I think it was. Did y'all do them? Is that the contract, Steve?
Uh, well, no. Uh, Jason recommends not doing that. But you do need to do a motion to put this on auction time.
That's our first question.
Yeah, that's our first stuff.
It's yours, don't you want to make a move?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll tell you. To put it on.
I'll, I'll. Uh, Southern Financial Service, it's a collection agency. They gave, sent me an email wanting to uh collect for the county. I told them we already had one company and they were doing some other stuff with solid waste. They were wanting to do a proposal for y'all. Do you wanna hear them or not?
Can, can we do it by Zoom?
Who is it?
Southern Financial Systems.
Where they from?
Uh, somewhere around Jackson, where in the south.
And this is a place to group to try to help with our bad debt?
Yeah. You know, we've, we've got American Municipal Services at Justice Court already. I, you know, they said they would soon send a letter or whatever. Do you wanna hear them or not, or?
I'd love you to talk to them and if they get anything off. Blue ball.
I would that interfere with what you got going on. Give you a problem.
Well, I think you'd have to break that contract.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, uh.
Hope for me, we all getting something now. Much as we bring it in, I'd hate to lose that contract. You ain't like it.
At least two thousand.
I, I don't, I don't know why, if you're gonna have to break the contract and then take the contract with somebody you don't know.
Get more information and let's look at it.
I've, I've got it.
You got all you want.
I've got all you wanna look at. They're gonna, all they're gonna do is send a letter saying you owe this money and if they pay it, they go add twenty-five percent to it.
Pretty much what?
That's the same, same Robert. Yeah, we might want to stay away.
I know, I know.
Why do you get say this?
He did, right. I did. That's right, we're not listening. So do you care about them?
No. No, that's, it's.
All right, Lynetta Cooks, they called and said that it was time to apply for CDBGs. Do y'all have any type of project that you want to apply for?
Have we ever got a CDBD grant?
For the water.
I was just fixing to say.
Well, the water association?
We, we, we actually just passed the money through, but it saved them a hundred and uh fifty thousand or whatever.
I can't remember, yeah.
Oh, and I was, I, I'd have done thought about that. It's, we probably, since it's the same people, we, we probably need to keep an ear to the ground every year, like if the system out there has a project. I mean, that's good. It's, it's good for the, the taxpayer. It's good PR for us. And it's, I mean, basically, we're just a pastor, but it gets them that money because we're willing to do it. Like on water, like if you have a project, they want.
We could put a whale in it, yeah.
Well, it'd be, it'd be good for you to get.
Well, it'd be, it would be good for you to get the board Chucky to fire, to you, and that's a fire for this CDBG. And if, and if that project, the way Beulah Hubbard works, I think the total project was nine hundred thousand, and I think because of the CDBG, we saved them a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
But Chucky can do it, but they can't.
But I don't think, I don't think it's as applicable, they'll get it if we.
Well, I know one, they fired for something, and it back, and it didn't. But we done something around, they're gonna get a loan forgiveness, basically, was, I mean, it's gonna be like a two hundred thousand. Probably got one, probably can't do another before they get that one.
We were checking.
But is it a recent plan in development?
Probably, I think so.
And you still might be.
No, I, I would let them, I would let them check. Yeah, they know they'll hurt anybody.
That's right.
And if anybody else has got a water system in your, in your district that's, that's gonna do anything, I mean, it's, you can do one a year. So it'd be, it's worthwhile for us to help them if we can.
The, uh, small municipality grant that we got to build the extension building expires September twenty-fifth.
Did we ask about extension on that?
Uh, we've got to show that we've done something.
Well, we all, but. Did we ask about extension on that? Come on, Steve. I guess that would be more.
They just told me, I love it there, I love Mexico. That's, that's all I got.
You got anything?
Have we heard, I, I, since we've had this surplus, have we heard anything from the reverse auction on the mini, I would have found out like yesterday. I wonder what today, what?
If that starts at ten?
Today?
Uh, ten fifteen, one of them, yeah.
Today, it told me Wednesday.
It's, it's today, so she should get the results and bring it around, and then y'all have to approve it.
Before we leave?
Yeah.
Somebody get that order. Yep, I do have two, something, I, I want to declare a fear tank, old fear tank, and a flare bowl. That's dug up out of the bushes. I'm gonna put them in Hallow Earth auction. Yeah, I think it's twenty-eighth next month. He calling to see if anybody has anything they want to put in it. Oh, on that, on that same declaring surplus. Everybody understands metal, short metal back at the twelfth century, junkyard.
I did not realize.
So if we got it, and the guy called me, so if anybody got anything, this, today would be the day to, I gotta take this.
I got a bunch of coves that I need to, uh, do, like several of them, and I already talked to Chris about it. You say if they're all.
So we got that general, get advertised.
And I don't, call where either one of those is on their.
So I got Kenneth making a motion.
I see.
We, we.
This most of the surplus.
Okay.
Going to Hallow.
Going to Hallow Earth. Sign on the metal, we still need to, it's not open, is it?
You'd have to declare surplus and then take bids, unless you gave it to the land.
I can do that. I make a motion to declare coves, surplus.
Jack.
Then we gonna make up a kind of what?
You make it kind of what? Could I do that?
Yep.
Okay, that's good. All in, but.
Well, then you get bids, is that what you're gonna say?
Yeah, okay.
I tell you, you forget it, I'm just trying. Oh, Miss Charles.
Yeah, I need to declare surplus too, I guess I, Mike was done in that Sunday, I don't know. Got a rotary tiller, a one ton Chevrolet truck, nineteen eighty-four, a Rhino sized mountain bushel, and a landscape blade that's on, it's hydraulic, I believe.
What was that, a landscape?
Landscape blade, it's like a big box blade on wheels, hydraulic.
How are you getting selling?
You buy it, you buy it, everybody's liking it.
I do Hollywood, I buy it.
That wasn't on your front?
Yes. Twenty-four volt, nineteen eighty-four.
Relate to.
Beef.
Relate to.
Yeah. I watched that blade pin, I think. Anybody need to take a look?
I might look at it, I might even look at it, yeah.
And that side mountain bushel is a good bushel, nothing wrong with it.
It ain't malleys?
It ain't malleys?
It ain't malleys. It's three point eight.
That was the shore.
Okay.
All right, you made a motion?
I did.
You got second?
Second.
All in, but. You just declared your suit.
Yes, I declared.
You got anything you think was one of those?
Yeah, I guess I got a person, well, I guess, I'll go ahead and ask Jason, I guess it's turned out like the wild ride. It sold at auction time three weeks ago. I couldn't look up the, so, I ain't heard nothing, I know that. So I guess it, until we receive money, it don't, the sale will never really happen, is that, is that how that go?
Never seen, do you sell it outside?
Auction time.
Auction time? Is that clear now?
Yes, and it sold.
You have the title?
Yes, we got the title.
Oh, then you got the title, you gonna get the money?
Oh, we got the title.
Okay, I don't want you to ask.
You can't get tagged on it, because the state's got inspected, but they put all that on there. Yeah, they put all that on there.
We don't have a title.
Before, well, uh, so, auction time, Joe.
That's right, I don't, we still.
Well, you can't get a title, but, till you go get all that stuff done for you.
We don't see our dog with title. And my mom's title get tagged, and that's the last time anybody seen the title.
She said she had your thoughts.
Oh, so you get paid for it?
And he's, she said you gave the check back to her. That it, because you thought it was a check.
What, do what now?
She, all right, bless me back.
She's, she's had a check, and I said, what am I gonna do for it? I can put it in the bank.
Yeah, she gave you, she said that was the truck, but she was gonna double check.
So where's the check now?
Deposit.
Deposit in your account. Oh, they, they on the truck, they just take them out. Well, that's good, that's even better.
Hey, that's even better.
I'm keeping up.
What did you do? Is he coming, staff coming, Brian?
She's gonna buy this back.
Okay, is he coming, get us cash here, please?
I got one for you already.
Okay, I don't see it.
They're sitting right here, wait.
I got one last question. I'm mainly gonna be Steve, keep it, see that, all right, if we can approve these bids, this contract.
Yeah.
All right, the mill in here, I called Superior the other day to see if they were gonna be there.
Okay.
Can I buy from Superior?
In Josh Minnis, it did not, in these miniature, it did not say that we bid in old asphalt. I looked at, that's why.
Hillin?
I think Millen.
We didn't accept it.
That's why.
Okay, yes, okay, that's why I got it marked too, so.
It wasn't in that bid.
But that's gonna put us back, we can't give the five thousand, that, that, per county wire.
Yep.
Steve.
Wait a minute.
That month, so we do go when I go.
I got a little pile that I'll let y'all in on, if y'all won't mess me up.
And you sold your truck, so we gonna.
Yeah, I could get it. Now, y'all gonna be messing me up, me personally, I ain't worried about my account.
Up on forty-five?
He wanted, drove from the truck stop. And we loved it, he wanted fifty dollars a load on the front of the truck.
And he bought from the pole?
I went down a load on my box truck yesterday, yeah.
Oh, you did, I'm talking about, oh, we set up the.
Eight pack.
Eight pack.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But we still gotta. But I don't think my eight pack had it.
Let me make sure next week, 'cause I got a bowl with my drive.
So.
You want it?
We set eight pack. We still don't do sets, Superior came because.
Do we have a first and?
Yeah, I did have one more question.
Based on distance.
That's probably.
I did have one more thing.
Okay.
The grass for twenty twenty-one, show barn, and we bid it, and the people who was at, what, what was the?
That's up to y'all.
Well, I had a guy call me yesterday, wants to bid on it, I told him, I said, I don't want, I don't want none, who said it now?
Steve, very version, two or three years, if y'all want to bid, that's good.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm asking. I thought.
We got something I'm doing, let's, let's go. We.
Now, he hadn't contacted me, or, I don't guess he contacted you, Steve, I'm assuming he's still not capable of doing it, I don't know.
Okay, two hundred dollars a cut?
I, I think that's about right.
Two hundred dollars.
Two one or two ten, I'm not sure.
Y'all want to cut it?
Y'all want to cut it?
I don't.
Let me think about that.
You cut the jail now, ain't you?
I cut the jail because of rain, and the rough rain.
You don't like that, just think about it.
All right, what else we got? What's all this thing?
Did you have something else you wanted?
I think that's gonna be executive session. Oh, he ain't give us nothing.
Oh, on this asphalt, do we need to make a motion on that thing?
If you want to.
Would you have a problem with having eight pack number one and Superior on our second choice, in case one don't have one, we can't give to the other? Y'all just don't want to be.
Well, that means then, if we give them.
That's just those two.
That means if eight pack, you got it, I've got to go eight pack.
Is that what that means?
No.
Okay, that's not what that means, excuse me.
Based on distance.
So you can make sure of this, that you go Superior anytime you want to, if you ain't, in my front.
What was the, Joe, what was the price over there?
Two fifty, thirty-five load.
Okay, so they don't have skid cars.
No. Okay. When you leave there, you gotta lose it. I weigh about nine thousand on a block through a good place, probably.
You gotta tell her that.
I don't tell her.
But what?
But I just need to be able to get some big cover to not have to worry about that.
Did we get a bid for that?
No, I don't guess. Did we get a bid from eight pack?
We didn't ask for a bid, they took one in here, I mean, from, uh.
We didn't ask.
We got a bid from both.
But that's what you're saying, we need to rebid then?
We didn't, and that's part one. We didn't get a bid from both.
I was right now, I was.
But that's from blank.
How come I ain't got a nice whole lot?
I'm sorry. This bid was from, this bid was from blank, for Millen.
That's right.
Which is it?
Oh, that's Superior asphalt.
But they don't have Millen, do they?
Millen asphalt, twenty-two dollars per ton. So have we approved this?
Now, look at your little town.
Please get two quotes.
They, they did not get their bid in on that.
Okay.
See, that's what I'm talking about.
If, if you want to do this, you can re-advertise and take bids over.
Let me do it. They locked us out last year, changed it once. They never had none, or whatever, no.
Uh-oh, what's wrong with that? Can't go by five thousand dollars.
And that's your county wire.
Oh, that's what they're too big, too quote, then I can deal with what we need.
Yeah, problem with two, oh, two quote.
All you gotta do, call Superior, call eight pack, whoever cheaper, get it. Last year, Superior locked us out of this stuff that I found up at the cap, and I ain't gonna let you. So, and it's nothing to do, phone call, hey, you ain't, have to build that fault, yeah, how much get a ton, send it to you. Hey, you gotta build that fault, how much get a ton?
That's it, which I was just, y'all, y'all gotta be careful, that's how you do it.
We still can go over five thousand.
You go over five, but then you can go over fifty, no, you get two quotes.
Just it gonna get you. But that's for, but that's for.
No, I ain't never gonna get a.
Boy.
No, it's, the, the, our department's gonna consider that county wire.
When did that change that?
It's always been that way. They're gonna say you're bypassing the purchasing law.
Well, anybody's gonna buy fifty thousand, we're willing to get you that money.
So what do we, what kind of motion need to be made, Steve, too?
I didn't need to be able to get some.
I do too. You don't have to make anything, you can buy it from wherever you want, now, you just gotta watch your quotes and bids.
Okay, so.
If y'all all decide you're gonna haul Millen, then you need to get two quotes to make sure, and then y'all need to.
Now, that just be once a month?
No.
Once a week, if we get two quotes.
Could be every day.
Once a week, once, once a week, probably.
Well, maybe that's what we just need to get, in case they just get us bid once a week, and then we decide to haul, we haul.
But then you can't go over that fifty thousand dollar amount.
Yeah, that's, that's about it.
Yeah, that's probably not gonna happen.
I'm not gonna do that.
Are you being careful with?
You can, I might move her. It don't matter, y'all.
All right, anything you get. Go ahead.
You got a four we change it, but, but.
Oh, here we go.
Pam Joiner's sheriff's office, thirty thousand a year. Boldy Stutz, sheriff's office, oh. Forty thousand, eighteen, eleven twenty-three an hour. Regina Mapp, sheriff's office, eleven oh seven, twelve eighty-two an hour. Jonathan Cortez, New County Jail, nine six four, ten seventy-nine. Thomas Gregory, jail, nine six four, ten seventy-nine. Martha Boylock, jail, fourteen eighty-nine to sixteen fourteen. Jason Jones, ten dollars to eleven twenty-five, jail. Ryan Hannah, the jail, eleven twenty-two to twelve forty-seven an hour. Jamie Johnson, jail, eleven forty-three to twelve sixty-eight an hour. Phil Evans, nineteen fifty-six to twenty eighty-one an hour. Kyle Morrow, jail, ten eighteen to eleven forty-three. And Stephen Kelly, the jail, uh, was terminated twelve, January the twelfth, pleaded foul runs and regulations. That's all I hear.
We're gonna discover now.
Six, seven. I'm making a motion, let's see if next session.
You gonna have anything, have that, after that?
I just made, well.
Taking on the agenda? Made.
I just put it on there, she didn't ask to make it.
He did, no.
No, we'll have it up.
I just did one Caroline, just sitting around out there.
Our engineer's not going.
No, he, he, he's making that, I don't know.
We're going in the next, just say.